Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Roll call, Dan Turin, Ben Hub, Jeff Orpenny?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no guest speakers.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Lysa Legg. And I have an idea that I wanted to bring forth with you guys, because I wanted it to be for the Bowling Green Township, the community and everything. But I wanted to start, like, in a robotics night for the whole community. And I was hoping to get it at the community building. But just something maybe a couple times a month, just to get everyone moving. And, I mean, I know everyone's got their New Year's resolutions, a lot of them are to lose weight this year. And I think the whole community would be a great help and support for people that are doing that. And I looked up multiple games workouts just to get everyone moving. And I thought, what better support and motivation rather than your community? I mean, we're all there to support everyone. And I made, I printed out some advertisements just in case, you know, to get this started if you wanted to look at those. And it's for everyone, it's no charge, I don't want to charge anything because, I mean, because we're all, we've been working together. And, I mean, I put on there that if you can't come, you can't come, that's alright, we're not, I mean, that's, it's your choice. And I also added in on our, because I made a registration form, and I put in a liability clause. Because I don't want us or anyone to be liable for someone being injured, since it's a free of charge thing. And they're gonna be coming at their own choice. So I didn't want anyone to be liable for injury, physical, mental, or emotional. And here's registration part, so liability clause is a paragraph. And then I also wanted to just, not just have this be aerobic workout, but also a learning thing. With, like, health benefits and, you know, just take information to know about that maybe some people didn't know about. And also things to take home, because I don't want this, I don't want it to be, you know, like, a religious thing that you have to go to. And if you're not doing anything at home, just some things at home to do. And then just also some exercises and things to do there. So, I mean, it's up to you guys, I just thought it would be a great thing for the community to get involved with and for the whole township. Uh, I was thinking maybe every other Thursday at, like, probably six to eight, like, six. So I could come in and get things set up for what's gonna be, what we're gonna be doing Monday. And then everyone come in around six thirty, seven, and we could start from there. And I don't, like, I don't want this just to be me, if anyone else has any ideas, I want them to let me know. And, you know, we can go from there on what they wanna do, I don't want this to just be something for me, because everyone's gonna be involved. So. Any questions? Yeah, and, um... Uh, and I was with this, since it's for the township, I was wondering if, if you guys liked the idea that I, I could have the community building no charge, since it's for the township.
Alright, I see your problem. You'll keep it clean, right?
Yes, of course. And I'm, I'm gonna try and get the word out there, because I want it to be, like, I wanna send the flyers out to, like, my school, because I know there's a bunch of college kids that would love to join, but also, like, and local around us too. So for the township and also people around us. So this is a chance for them to come, because not everyone has the money to go to a local gym and pay thirty dollars a month to go work out. When here you have the community supporting you and it's also free. I think that's it.
You have a draw? We try. Need make a motion?
Probably all of them. Yeah, I didn't know what, how to word that, I never, because that was my main concern, is not let the township or anyone getting, like, be liable for something that they're choosing to come do. Like, I'm not paying, I'm not taking their money to come do, to come work out. So if you have any changes for that, I can change it, I didn't know how to word it.
I'm fine, but let's talk, and just pull that in, maybe see if there's anything else we should add in here.
Yeah.
And she wants, like, springing that in, except that, well, they're forward on either condition.
I'm moved that we, um, consult legal counsel, we're toward pursuing for an impossibility of, uh, resident holding aerobics nights.
It'll be ours if we have an inch of forty next morning, if it runs only thirty days, cool.
Sir, second, do you have some action?
Oh, sorry.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, any correspondence?
Safety, everything's alright?
Oh, hang, hang on, I got a question I was gonna, um, this came in the mail, I didn't ask the guy where it, I don't know if you got it or not, but kind of called Frost Tree Service, sending information about, um, tree removal, trimming, grinding, and...
We got the old monitors, it was far away.
And then, uh, zoning inspector handed this, this is the first I've seen it, looks like, uh, zoning inspector's copied on it, we said we got it, has to do with a property on Hunter Hills Road. I obtained a copy, when, uh, we got an email that said that Bowling Green Township was participating in a, as a partner in a litter, in a tire amnesty grant. Um, I checked into it, because it said that we had given them verbal and written documentation that we were to participate. And I've come to find out that it was the zoning inspector that, that had done that. Um, on January thirty first, went to the post office, and we got this, says it's from Bowling Green Township. And all it has in it, I looked at, is a CD of pictures of, of the West property and the Step property. And I actually wanted to see the entire file on it and the legal advice, which, you know, I don't have anything but the CD. Gary Stepp had given me a record request, and I gave it to you already. Um, I have a resolution prepared, but it's kind of a moot point now, because for us to participate in this year's tire collection amnesty grant, we would've had to have done it the last meeting, so that's, um... And I think that's it on correspondence, this is all from last time.
Okay, the, like, everything's alright on safety, uh, and, and our companies, I mean...
Just to, um, re-innovate on that litter collection, anybody can fill out a grant, it just has to be approved through the township trustees. This information was sent to me directly, so I acted on it. Violation for one six two four six Laurel Hill Road southeast, which was started in October of two thousand twelve. They received a notice of violation, zoning violation via certified mail. Sent the new disc to the prosecuting attorney, and we need a board vote to have this forward for the prosecuting attorney to do further actions.
Are you saying you sent in the disc, a, a new violation to these people?
No, that violation was October two thousand twelve. It states it right on there, it started in twelve, now it's time to move forward, because no action has ever been done. They haven't done what was asked. Prosecuting attorney said she needs the board vote. And the disc you requested, I asked you specifically, and you said you wanted the photos from the aerial, that's what you got. You've received all the other documentations as we went through them.
I've never received that email that we had here that night, that had supposedly legal information in it from the prosecutor. I've never had an opportunity to see that or read it, that's one piece that I'd like to, to have.
For the aerial request?
It's the email that you had here several months ago, that a copy was supposed to be made before the end of the meeting.
For the aerial photo request?
Whatever the legal email said, I don't know what it had to do with...
Again, that is what it said.
I'm simply asking for a copy.
That's what it said, I will get you a copy.
I've asked for it months ago, so...
And I am certifying everything you asked for, so I have proof. And if you noticed on it, it didn't say from Bowling Green Township. Your certified letter indicated Barbara Solig, zoning inspector, and also indicated on it, when you signed for it, aerial photos.
There's nothing in here with your name on it.
Did you sign a document?
There's nothing here with your name on it.
Did you sign a little green card?
I sure did, it took off the back end.
That's right, and that's exactly what was on it, if you would've read it.
I did read it.
Okay, then you knew what was in there.
I've already shared what was in there, a desk of pictures on it.
I, I have the copy, you read it, you signed it, it stated it.
And that's what I got, right here.
Okay, so back to the vote.
So I still need the legal advice, if we're gonna be voting on something, I lost the votes.
We have a grant, no. Prosecuting attorney stated that it has to go to the board to take further action. So I'm requesting the board make a vote to take further action on this violation.
Jenny, what, just to bring us up to date, what was the last motion the board did, wasn't it, didn't you already do that?
That was on Gary Stepp.
We moved, we, we moved a motion, I believe it was a roll call vote, two to one, to pursue forward to take photographs, right?
Yeah.
Wasn't there also another motion about moving it forward and sending it to the prosecutor, wasn't that prior to that?
No.
That was on Gary Stepp.
Well, the pictures are for Gary Stepp's property and...
And Laurel Hill.
Right. So you're specifically talking about this, the Laurel Hill one right now?
Right now, I'm talking about Laurel Hill, because the other one was already brought forward. And she's working on that with the new updates.
You're saying with the Step property, yeah, she's already processing something forward based on new pictures?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, did you guys look at the first pictures and the second pictures before you're doing this vote?
Yes, I did.
You did, okay. Did you also look at what we received, saying our violation was? And also, did you also read this list of things that make up that violation?
See, I forget it.
Okay, just one.
Is this the same one you got here? That's, I just got that one, that's...
Yeah, you see that, you see that phone number and that file number and that name? I brought all this in case you didn't have it, because that's my twenty's name and file number, please.
What is it about?
Prosecuting attorney, you can utilize that at that time.
Well, just, just this.
Is someone gonna tell me on this list what things have to be moved on this list? Is prosecuting attorney gonna tell us what on that list dated December thirtieth is in violation?
I cannot answer for the prosecuting attorney.
Well, I think you guys ought to be able to answer this.
Are you looking at this one, summer nineteenth?
This one that says voting signs, gray tractor, red tractor, white car, culvert pipe, bush hog, signboard, golf cart. Uh, those things, all of our tractors are in violation because they're on our property?
That was given to you...
You guys gotta read it real good, that's all I can tell you.
These are all sitting on there.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not threatening you, but I'm saying those tractors are not in violation of a junkyard.
Just to clarify, Mrs. Solig, this is the summer nineteenth letter right here, this is what you're basing want must move forward on, is this the list?
Um, actually, no, because if you looked at the disc, you will see that they added to the back of the property. More scraps have been collected, and the main violation even indicates salvage and junkyard.
Okay. Do you also have this from the health department? I brought you this. And you're gonna tell me that the pictures do not show less scrap metal and less of everything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, then you, somebody needs to make out a list of what these violations are, because...
That would be the prosecuting attorney when it goes forward.
Okay, but she's gonna have to come out and look at it then.
She will probably get a court order to come out and actually look at it.
Okay, that's fine, she can do that.
So you're, just to clarify, you're not basing it on this list here?
No, that was the first one that was sent in two thousand twelve.
Where is, oh, yes.
More stuff has been added since. That's why she wanted the updates.
So we're going to get a something to tell us what we're in violation of, what is in violation? Because this December thirtieth list, none of these things are violations, and that's all we ever got.
That was given to me via prosecuting attorney. She's the one that wrote those out.
She wrote that up, well, then there's something wrong with her.
That's not my problem, you need to discuss it with her, you need to discuss it with her.
Isn't, isn't this an agricultural disaster?
Okay, we...
Look at all the tractors listed on there.
The attorney stated, if you're using the tractors, they shouldn't be sitting where they are.
No, 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 no.
They shouldn't be moved.
No, no.
So this is how the prosecuting attorney...
No, that, that is not true, and you know it.
According to the prosecuting attorney, yes.
Well, there's something wrong with her, because we can park our tractors anywhere on that sixty-some acres. And you don't use tractors that much in the winter. That is, that is outrageous.
And you don't use them in the summer either.
Yes, we do, no.
Yeah, I'm rich.
They have not been moved.
Well, my attorney will be talking to her, okay? Because he said that is not, that is not legal.
Because it's our property or it's yours?
You can have that, you can have it. Now, everybody in the township better be moving all their tractors off their property then.
Oh.
But I'll tell you what my attorney said, he said that, that is not the basis of justifying why our tractors are where they are. The basis of justifying why our tractors are where they are is because it is legal. We are not illegal to have them there, that is what he said.
I only see two tractors on here, there's a bunch of other stuff.
Okay, there's a gray tractor, a gray tractor, a white car, what's wrong with the white car?
So I don't think the county reading the tractor. Bring it up with the prosecuting attorney.
What is wrong with it, you can't answer the question?
Bring it up with the prosecuting attorney, I will not fight with you in a meeting.
Do you have a bro? The prosecutor is requesting that we, um, take a vote to send the violations to her, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Now, actually, she has the violations, she wants to bring it to court now, so you have to vote on that.
Well, just to clarify, is it, is it the prosecuting attorney that wants to do this, or is it you?
Prosecuting attorney wants to go forward.
Can, can I, before you go, can I ask you a question?
Because, again, I'd like to see the legal correspondence from the prosecuting attorney stating that she wants to do that. I don't think that's...
I sat in her office, I don't have it in writing.
That's what we want.
If you'd like to sit in the office, fine, I am asking for a vote from the board to bring this forward.
I don't believe you can vote until you have it in writing.
I believe they can, that's your personal opinion.
Well, I believe that they need to see that she sent that.
You had it in writing, you even brought a copy, you're in violation, it's time to bring it forward.
I wanna know what on this list that you gave me is in violation.
Talk to your attorney.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we send the violation for one six two four six Laurel Hill Road, which was started back in two thousand twelve, um, to the prosecutor's office, let them move forward with the legal actions that they need to take.
Thank you.
Oh, second, that way we get it over with.
You guys are real gems.
Got a first and a second in motion, so there can be discussion. First of all, you're saying violation, I, I highly recommend you use the word alleged violation, this has not been determined.
I made a motion, I put the words in my mouth.
I'm, I want it on the record that I have noted that as such. I will not be participating in a vote where I do not have the claim...
You don't participate very much, Jeff, okay?
Why are you interrupting me?
You interrupted me, thank you.
I don't think so.
How can we get rid of...
I will not, why are you talking?
How can we get rid of you?
Have you got any idea?
Are you gonna let me have discussion, there are a first and a second, President Van Buren, let me have a discussion. I'm trying to have a discussion to explain, right?
Alright, we're gonna get it over with.
Alright, if you stop interrupting me, everybody in the room, maybe that would happen a lot more efficient. I don't believe that we should move forward without written legal advice from the prosecuting attorney's office. Not just hearsay of a conversation that our zoning inspector had.
I also had a conversation with the prosecutor, Jeff, okay?
So I will be... You're interrupting me now.
No, I'm telling you is what I'm doing, and she advised that our board take a vote to move forward with legal action with this case.
I will abstain.
So that's what we're doing.
How, how do we know this?
And I hope for yesterday, if you'd like to call her tomorrow and ask her, you can ask, I hope for Monday.
It's irrelevant, it's not...
You're saying it's hearsay, it's not hearsay.
I've stated what I have to say, and you can do whatever you need to say, I have nothing further to say on the matter.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, I'm gonna do roll call, Dan. Jeff?
Abstain, I've already explained that.
Ben?
Yes.
People in Glass House, they should not throw stones, you ever hear that? Okay, I, I said it.
Okay, move on.
Do you have anything else on the resume?
Um, I showed you, I gave you a copy of that letter from Pat, Patrick Mandan. He is the attorney for the Wicklines, the Wicklines have yet to gain access. Uh, talked to prosecuting attorney, she said that this is a civil suit, so I gave you a copy of it. Uh, the Lust and Roberts are trying to get that road vacated now, that's their process, but I don't... According to the engineers, they don't see it happening.
They don't see what happening?
Them gaining that road access, having it vacated. Somewhere down the line, something fell through and that road was never vacated.
Are we having discussion, Dan, on this, uh...
On the road?
On this letter she's talking about?
No, I just gave it to you for information.
Okay, because there's one thing in here that I think we should be concerned about, it's, it states here that, you know, as far as I know, this is the first that's come to the board, you guys might know about it, got it, saw it tonight, but it makes a statement here about Bowling Green Township trustees, it says, um, just read the whole paragraph, so it's in context. In that you are violating their right to use this road, this is to advise you that if these items are not immediately removed from the property, we will find, file a complaint against you in the Wicken County Court of Common Pleas seeking that declaratory ju- judgment, damages injunction relief, as well as attorney fees for your failure to comply with, not only Wickline's request, but the request of the Bowling Green Township trustees. Now, unless it's really old, the Bowling Green Township trustees have never put any requests in on this matter. Unless, like I said, it's really old stuff, because it hasn't happened while I've been serving on this table.
We don't even get paid for, for, for mollying on that.
But my point is, here it talks about the board trustees.
They wrote the letter, they wrote the letter.
The reason, the board of trustees is on there, Ben, did you not go talk to Mr. Lust?
Yes.
Dan, did you not go talk to Mr. Lust, are you both trustees?
Yep.
When did you do this?
Been the last thirty days.
Been the last month, there, I talked to him.
So did they call you, or you just got a copy of this letter or something? Because this, tonight's the first I've heard of it.
They, they contacted me.
I contacted you.
Yeah, you contacted me.
Letting you know about the problem. And Lust contacted you.
Yeah, yeah, Lust contacted me.
Well, if it's a civil matter, I don't know where the trustees fall in that.
It was an information form, I was letting you know what's going on, so you know in the future, if something happens.
Okay. Move on, unfinished business. Did you bring, bring it there, uh, I'll turn the conversation in.
No, Dan, I don't have it on the machine anymore. I feel that that, I feel that that topic was fully discussed at the last meeting, and you took that topic out of my hands. So where are we on that project now, where are we going with it?
I didn't take it out of your hands, okay?
The meeting minutes, said right there that you and Ben were gonna take care of it, so...
We're still waiting on you to do something, Jeff, something, a, a little bit of something, okay? Maybe that was supposed to light a fire underneath that, to do something. But obviously you haven't received forward with anything.
So is that where we are on it, Dan?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you done anything?
I thought it was pretty clear at the last meeting.
What, that you want me to do anything?
Where's the meeting minutes, I think she's...
Is that what's clear, that you want me to do anything?
Isn't that a public record? You taking me?
Is that what you need, Dan, you wanna come to that?
Yeah.
See if I can retrieve it, like I said, it's not on the machine anymore. What is it you're trying to find from that?
Well, you told me I would, told you not to put it in.
Yeah, I think we thoroughly discussed that, the conversation was about, you had concerns, we talked about it last night, you took it out of my hands. And then you started calling me a liar.
You're the one called me a liar first.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. I didn't sit here and say, damn, damn, you're, you're a liar, they wanted to know an update, and I said, no, verbatim, well, the exact words, I don't know. But I knew I couldn't move forward if I followed your, your concerns about possibly getting it shocked. We talked about the summer shock.
That's right, we talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
But you know what, did you even check on getting it shocked, or talk to anybody about it?
Before the last meeting, I did, there, there's a man that's a well-burrowed, that's on Cooksville Road. He said he would even be willing to come in and talk to the board about shocking it, he tells... He tells us how to do it if he wanted to, or he could.
See, we didn't bring that up.
Yeah, it was just last month.
What's his name?
Uh, Bucky Maury. His first name's not really Bucky, but it's, but Bucky Maury. He's a, a realtor at a welder. So, you know, you had concerns about it. We talked about it. I did talk with them, and like I told you before, somebody told me they felt they saw someone down there shocking it. Apparently that didn't happen. I don't know. Was it dead or didn't? But, you know, that's where we're at on it. So the, the meeting minutes clearly said that Ben and Dan were gonna take care of it. So.
Well, we figured we have to, anyway.
We knew we have to. That, that was supposed to light a fire, and you have to say, wow, maybe I should, I should have made up and do something. You know, I have responsibilities too, that, that I should do something.
That's you, Ben. That's your, that's your, uh, method of, that's your, that's your method of operation.
That didn't happen. That's fire, I'm just, yes, you're right.
Jeff, I'll tell you one thing. We plowed the snow for about twenty-four hours, and I never seen a truck coming out of your driveway this last night. So that tells me you didn't do a damn thing.
He probably needed to plow the driveway so he could get it off.
Well, it's right here. Here, here's what's in it. Trustee Hupp made a motion to buy the mid-grade softener, have it stalled. There's no second to the motion. Then it says trustee Hupp and Van Buren will take care of it. That's where it was left. Well, that's where we add in on that topic.
Well, we'll do it.
Like everything else, Jeff. Like everything else.
But you said you was gonna bring that to the next meeting, and you didn't bring it.
No, I didn't. I never made that statement.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Didn't.
Yes.
It's all on either tape.
I gotta do this for the presentation.
You, I, you're not.
I never stated I would bring a tape in for you.
Think you can probably get a copy.
Sorry, Dan, did you say something?
Think you can probably get a copy of the tape.
Yeah, I, I, I request a record, request a copy of the tape. We'll move on, uh, I'll tell you, the trash. You, you talked to.
Spoke to prosecutor yesterday, okay? There were several things I spoke to her about, okay? One of them was the Lust violation. The other one was the trash violation. Okay, that was Monday. Uh, when I spoke to her, she said, um, service was delivered to CMI, Mr. Chappellford, at his office on January fifteenth, January one five. Okay, he has twenty-eight days to respond. So he has till the twelfth of February, February one two, okay? He does not respond by the twelfth. In order of judgment, default against him because he did not respond. If he does respond, it's on the court board after that. So that's where we're standing at. So for the time, box there.
Okay, new business.
That doesn't matter anymore.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, one thing I had on unfinished business is, uh, and this kind of goes for you, Jeff, is, is you always tell us that when we plow, that we never call you. Uh, I called you several times. Did you get my messages when I called you? About your messages?
I have two messages from the event.
Okay, that we needed help. How come you never returned my call, or made any effort to get any help?
I've got two messages from, that answers your question.
I'm, I'm asking you, how come you never made any effort? You don't want?
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll see if I have those recorded too, and I'll bring them.
Oh, you don't want them? Cause I have them over. I have them recorded, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, but I'd like copies if you know what you would say.
You already have copies, so.
I may or may not. I don't know.
I may, I may, I don't have copies either.
My answer is, once my answer, my answer is she doesn't have the link of the case file.
This is for some kind of burden.
Why didn't you show the text to me? Or at least call me back and say, hey, I can't make it?
I didn't.
Myself, Dan, and two workers plowed for hours on that, hours on that, Jeff.
Yeah, I think that's what your message said. How do you do it?
And there was still more plowing to do.
I've got no comments for you, Mr. Hupp.
Now, I'm curious. You, that's one big thing you always have to rest, like, they never call me. They never call me when it's there, so I don't know what they're doing. I called them.
Just verify I have two messages that you called.
I called them. So what's your responsibility?
Yeah, Dan, what's going on? Cause you're not gonna get nothing out of it.
No, things work.
Okay.
Get a pay.
Are, are, are you willing to go out, if we get to know, right, tonight, and you want to go out and help us tomorrow? Tonight, tomorrow?
I'm not gonna go solo anymore, Ben. If a worker needs help, I'll be happy to ride along and assist him.
I called you.
Okay.
Got nothing further to say.
No, you didn't answer my question. Are you willing to go out and help us?
I just answered your question.
No, you didn't. You said you're not going solo.
Okay, if a worker needs assistance, I'll be happy to ride with them and assist them.
Okay.
I will not be going solo.
You can't drive a truck by yourself. It takes two people to drive a truck or a tractor.
I'm not gonna repeat myself for a time.
Okay, Wes.
Oh, my.
How about public comment?
I'd like to ask a question. How, what do people have to do to get rid of something that doesn't produce enough money? It just takes twelve hundred dollars a month from the people.
Goes now.
Gets, gets a check, gets his insurance paid. As far as I'm concerned, that man hadn't done nothing all the time he's been in, it's all trouble.
It's about forty-one hundred dollars a month, somewhere around there, forty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars.
He told me that's fair in the state of township.
They need them. They need to find us.
And rail? I make a motion, pay bill.
Hey, wait, I have a public comment.
Yes, public comment.
I've been waiting to, to say, I've been waiting to say that that paper that I gave you, that is from the health department man. I wanna make sure that the prosecuting attorney has a copy of that, and that last page especially. While he came out all these different dates, on my copy, it's, it's highlighted, and then it says right here, reinspection, it was determined that the nuisance had been invaded. He had no more problems with us. And then I wanted to ask, when you were saying that you have to move forward, was this the prosecuting attorney telling you you have to move forward? Or it's up to you whether you want to move forward?
She made a recommendation to the board to take a vote to see if the board wanted to move forward.
Okay, she made a recommendation to take a vote, that you could have voted no or yes. There was no one telling you, you had to say yes. Okay, I got it. It's all I wanted to know for the record.
Should I get kind of a copy of that health thing too? What is that health department? Is it, is it based on that list?
I want to look at it.
No. The health department's been called on them repeatedly for burning things.
So this has nothing to do?
No, it has nothing to do with burning that. No. Health department had nothing to do with burning things. The health department has nothing to do with that violation. I never called the health department. Local people called the health department. If you can answer this question for me, any of you, anybody sitting at the table or in the room, what on that list is a violation? That we have only been given that list. What isn't? What isn't? No one will answer that because they don't want us to, to know, I guess.
You should go to the county prosecutor and find out for yourself. Be a big hearing, argue it every once in a while, know what you're talking about.
The prosecutor attorney will, will. The prosecutor will not talk to me because she represents the township. I cannot ask her, what on that list that we were mailed is the violations?
Hang on, I'm gonna tell you what the violations are, okay?
Okay, I asked you last meeting. I asked you the meeting before, and you had to say, if you go, let us go listen.
Didn't ask me at the last meeting.
Yes.
You said, you said you didn't get a copy of it, and you don't know what they are, but you produced this just today.
Very last time. No, I did not say.
Okay, you are in violation of section nine point five. Cannot have a business or junkyard or a salvage park or a storage yard in the agricultural district.
Okay, storage yard what?
Not permitted use. See attachment, section nine point five. You've got that copy also. Agricultural district, district A G, section nine point eleven. Eleven, limitates limitations of the number of principal structures per lot unless otherwise specified within the resolution. No lot shall contain upon it more than one principal structure. That's abbreviation, cause it's in that section. And violation of having three. Now, I pulled the wrong one out. No, that's right. Three, cause they were looking at the different, um, trailers you had back there, which if you look, the trailers are not on it. Because we determined they were agricultural. Here's your list. Signs.
Signs? What signs?
Your election signs.
They're not there.
You put two more up. The gray tractor Ford.
Wait, 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 stop, stop.
The red tractor. No, you want me to read it? I'm reading it. I'm not gonna stop and debate everything. You want to know the violations? Here they are.
The signs are legal. The signs are legal.
No, they are not.
Yes, they are.
Lights, Pontiac, hood, and truck open. Seems inoperable. Carper's pipe.
Seems.
You know what? This is not for you to argue with me.
This is all about.
Argue with your attorney.
Bunch of lies.
You wanna know it, you ask for it. Now, would you like me to finish?
Okay, jump, come on. They're all lies.
This is a.
Do you want me to finish? And if you interrupt me again, I will not finish.
Promise?
I promise.
Where do I get a copy of that?
Done.
Where do I get a copy of that? So that, so shouldn't we know what we're supposed to have moved?
She just showed you.
Okay.
She showed it to him.
You can't, I can't believe you people. We, we have never had a list of anything that's a violation.
You've been running, you've been running, you lost.
Wes, okay, hey, Wes, Wes, that's enough, Wes, uh.
They don't want you down there where you come from.
Jeff, Jeff, we just stated in the meeting, they just showed Ben the list. Now they're contradicting it. Game over.
Hey, that, that's enough. Wes, make.
The car seems inoperable, but it's not. It's got license plates on it and it runs.
We'll not argue with discussing anything.
Okay, the carper pipe, we had to have to fix the driveway that we got the, you know what, for, the variance for. So we had to have that. The tractors, we used, they, they all run, and we're not running a scrapyard business. And yes, you can have a business because it says in there that you can have a business in your home.
Obviously, you can't. Is your scrapyard inside your home? No, it is not.
We do not have a scrapyard business.
Prove it. Don't prove it. That's what this is all about.
You prove that we do.
You prove you don't.
You prove we do have a scrapyard business.
I don't have to prove.
Yes, you do.
Do you breed and sell dog animals?
What's that?
Do you breed and sell dog animals?
I have animals.
Do you breed and sell dog animals?
Yeah, they're, they're animals.
That's a business. That's a business. Do you have a tow truck company, though?
Yeah.
That's a business.
She said we're not allowed to have a business, and it says right, right in your, your thing, you could have a whole business.
In your home.
Right, you can have a business.
Inside the house? Yeah! Bingo! You just read it right.
But you could not, but you could not bring outside traffic to that location for a business.
Oh my God, I can't believe you people.
Read the zoning.
The animals are illegal now because they're not inside my house?
No, you cannot bring outside traffic to that location. Do you understand what I'm saying? Or not? Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I believe the animals fall under act of alcohol.
I know exactly.
She's got exotic animals she sells. Does not underact.
I haven't seen anything.
I have every legal document.
And that's not even what's on it.
I haven't seen anything.
We're talking about the junkyard.
And the sign, and the scrapyard.
Dan made a motion to pay bill.
A second.
Second. I second that.
What I said before, what I said before is gonna happen.
Is that clear?
Yes.
And all these people, uh, doesn't bother anybody. They can't even see, got a flying over in an airplane.
And she got raised.
And the first checks, yeah, uh, all right.
Okay, we'll go. Get out a new time sheet. You need a time sheet for you.
So if you go with you, huh? We don't need a time sheet because we're on the salary net.
I know.
Uh, you know what? They should have voted for the time sheet, not that she moved. In January, that January meeting, that's what they should have done. Maybe next year they should have time sheets.
Yeah, I, I don't have time sheet. I have a public end of story, I'm four three six zero, two hundred sixty dollars, sixty cents.
No, they don't. They're getting a little earlier. The first, very first meeting. Yeah, they could have voted to do a time sheet.
Next one is love, seventy-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents.
Ever to say, we weren't not to get paid by what we do say.
Check four five, six point three hundred twenty-one. It's check four three five two.
The jack, the jack owes the, I do know that Obama says any government should be against.
I'll figure it out then.
Can you sing?
Maybe not, but we should bring that up.
Yeah, you wanted to do it, but sure.
Figure it out, bro.
He wanted to, he, he, somebody.
What is it?
I know.
I don't do what anybody says.
Yes, he is.
Is that you or?
Oh, yes, he is. Yes.
No, I didn't sign it. That's you.
Can't argue with that guy.
Only for particular events. Hey, Ben, do you know to put the sign on rank and row that you have to go slow off the hill before the trucks come down?
Twelve volt perimeter, yeah.
Right as you start up the hill.
At the big hill there?
Go slow, truck centering.
Dart.
I don't know what it is.
Is it?
Next one is the Department of Taxation.
We didn't put a sign on it?
Four three six six, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, sixty-one cents.
Big sign.
Like homemade sign?
Could be. Like on a couple poles and something in the middle.
Stuff is US Postmaster, four three six seven.
I don't what the, oh. Yeah, there's a sign up, there's a sign up there that stands.
Is that, is this, is this? Where is this? How does that log? Have you paid? So you have a check you're using? Have you been yet?
No. I had one last week, but I cashed it.
These guys already signed it, then? How much was it for?
Fifty dollars. It's not bad.
I need dollars. I need that for my, for my paper.
For, is that two of these?
Yeah.
I need that.
Which can be more.
Did you send the same exact thing to Wes's?
We need, we need to have it.
I'll just have this right here. You'll get it.
Right.
Check four three six three, auditor of state, two hundred ninety dollars. Four three six two, and we'll be a blow company, seven hundred sixty-three dollars, eighteen cents, bulk fuel.
Nope. Payable for checks. I didn't have the list on my, I wanted to grab one.
So you refuse to sign that payroll check.
Yeah, I'll write it home.
So it's not gonna have.
I'll sign it sometime, you know.
I haven't played it on.
So you're going to, so you're going for like, for like a fourth time now where I, where I'm not getting paid time.
But you're sticking the front, yeah? Is lucky I signed.
First of all, our meeting is a week late, and now, a week later, you refuse to sign that payroll check.
If you put your, if you put your signature on there, that's two signatures.
We've been on two, two meetings in a row, or?
Four three six one, M N C L for forty-nine dollars, forty-eight bucks. Of course, I have a legal notice.
Yeah, I did, I did.
But legal notices. Were these the ones to CMI or?
CMI.
Legal notices.
You guys wanna get into your interest on the Obama plan?
Do you have any expenses for, from, for the prosecutor for all this, uh?
They're trying to pass a law protect there in Bowling Green, cause the Obama plan, like everybody else.
Four three five nine, seventy-two dollars for like a tax return. Do you have a copy of this?
That's the E D A, not the health department.
There's four three five seven, I'll be watching, it's three twenty-three seven.
She's a lot of daggone.
If you don't mind, if you leave copies of those, you can, when you get to the other.
I, I know.
Four, three, five, four, Jack Griffin head is three forty-four thirty-nine.
I pray now.
Just the last ten.
Pee out into the ocean during a funeral.
I'm gonna be a giant.
It's on a spiral thing. But it left an opening, it's like a crater in here.
Is there any further business?
Cause how it looks.
Where's your income?
It'll be next year.